Okay, we have returned and we are now on page 23 of your printed agenda. Item 10, Items from Council. We have item A. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing November 19th. Final hearing December 3rd. One and two, they relate to street entertainers along the Bricktown Canal. That's item one. And then vending permits and so on in item two. I believe this might possibly be the first Twitter-instigated ordinance change in City Hall.
Well, I was gonna try to keep Twitter out of it because I figured it might be a little strange if I started. So somebody tagged me on Twitter. I was gonna say, I was approached by some residents. So I was, I was, yeah, I was approached by some musicians particularly who brought this to my attention on Twitter. So busking, just to create some definitions, because I realized as I was talking to some other folks about it over the weekend, they kept saying, "Wait, what are you talking about? I don't even understand what word you're using." So busking is a type of street performance. It's a practice that's engaged in cities around the world that helps add to street life and culture. And the musicians that approached me, or tagged me on Twitter, had essentially brought to my attention that the ability for musicians or other types of entertainers to busk or to perform in our public right-of-ways in Oklahoma City had been stifled by some decisions about 20 years ago, or just a little shy of 20 years ago, that just set up some hurdles and some permitting barriers. And so I approached the city manager's office to kind of do some surveys of some other cities and what they do. And I'd like to invite the Assistant City Manager McDermott up to kind of talk through the work she did and kind of what proposal she brought forward. And then we also met with an individual who works with Arts Council, who's a professional musician, to kind of talk through the implications for him and kind of what his input was. So, but yeah, I'll let Assistant City Manager address the changes and the technical portion of it.
Okay, thank you. Aubrey McDermott, City Manager's Office. I was asked to look into this and try to figure out how to streamline the process for people to get permits or licenses to do street entertainment. And worked with several city departments and found out that when the city regulated it in two different places in the zoning ordinance. First of all, we regulate it as a public amusement where people have to come in and they get licenses to do things. And under public amusement are things like carnivals and street shows, spectacles and games, dances. But street entertainers are also listed that require a license. The license is issued by the Development Center. There's a $30 annual fee for that license. It's a pretty streamlined process. The process does require a background check of anyone, and they have to get a photo ID badge from the police department. Typically, I hear that they can get down there and get in and out of that stage after the background check is cleared pretty quickly. However, in the Parks and Recreation Ordinance, for people who want to locate on the Bricktown Canal, there's a second set of rules and an additional permit that would be required. So if you want to locate along the canal as a public amusement or a street entertainer, you're subject to a whole bunch of different types of restrictions because they're trying to limit where people could be appropriately offering a street entertainment service because of the limited area between sidewalks and buildings. They don't want anybody to obscure the sidewalk or block it. Feel like there might be some safety risks with that. The Parks Director can issue that permit. It's a $100 permit, and it's only good for a year. So when we did our research on other cities and their requirements, of the 13 peer cities we looked at, none of those cities required a permit or a license for street entertainers. Several of those cities did require a permit or a license if the street entertainer wanted to amplify sound, or if the street entertainment was something that was more of a special permit, like multiple people wanting to do performances. They needed to take up a certain area or block a street, reserve a street to do so. So we modeled our change after that. Our ordinance proposes that we remove the licensing requirement citywide for street entertainers unless they're wanting to amplify sound. If they want to amplify sound, they would get a noise permit, just like anybody else who would propose to amplify sound. If they want to get a special event permit, because it's more than just a single person with a musical instrument and amplification, then they could pursue a special event permit. Except along the Bricktown Canal. So what this ordinance does is it gets rid of the secondary permit requirement that goes through the Parks Department, and it moves those specific safety restrictions for the Bricktown Canal under the licensing requirement. So if you want to locate along the Bricktown Canal, the Parks Director has to sign off on it. It's still subject to those location sites that the Parks Director deems as safe, and you would still pay the $30 license fee, still get the background check, and you would have that license for a year and reapply annually. So if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
You don't have to name them all right now, but the 13 peer cities, could we take a look at those cities? And does this have a donation component to it where people performing are seeking a donation? I guess is the question I'd have.
They're free to do that. It doesn't specify anything about whether or not people can or can't, and I think that that's their ability to set up a case and ask for a donation for their entertainment.
Just curious, I can't imagine there would be, but are there any fiscal ramifications?
We have issued zero permits for the licenses on the canal, the $100 permit, since it was initiated, I think, 20 years ago. But we have gone through the process to issue just a handful of street entertainer permits elsewhere in the city. So it's really not that many that we've seen so far, but now that we're streamlining the process, I think maybe that might reduce just a couple. So it's really just a matter of maybe less than $100 a year.
Good. Well, if we're ready, Councilwoman Hammond, you might want to make a motion to introduce the ordinance for consideration.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. It will have a public hearing on November 19th and a potential final hearing on December 3rd. 10B, this is ordinance to be introduced and adopted today with emergency declaring a 180-day moratorium on the acceptance of applications for processing of and issuance of electrical permits, signed permits, building permits, and rezoning applications that would allow construction on or use of property within 660 feet of the Lake Hefner Parkway from Northwest 63rd Street North to West Memorial Road for a billboard sign. Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've had an issue that's come up around Lake Hefner that's caused some concerns on several different fronts. And there are various stakeholders and different companies that are involved. And I really feel like that we need some time to reach out to the property owners in and around the lake. We need to reach out to some of the entities that are part of the lake, either Friends of Lake Hefner, the Boating Club, et cetera. We also have an issue that pertains to public health and safety concerning children. And I'm a little reluctant to go into great detail at this time, just because there are some settlement negotiations that are going on as we speak, and I don't really want to upset or offend or cause something to happen that might hurt those or prejudice those from being brought to fruition. So number one, I would ask that we pass the moratorium for 180 days so we can take the time to visit with the appropriate people that we need to talk to, and secondly, that that be an emergency.
Okay. We do have a citizen who's signed up to speak, and he is ready to go. Bill Hickman.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Bill Hickman, Representative Lamar Outdoor Advertising. I just wanted to express, first of all, that my client is opposed to this moratorium. It's unlawful and inappropriate to target one company with a moratorium. That's not how legislation is supposed to work. It's not business-friendly, and it's not appropriate. Number two, if this body wants to actually take action to address billboards and the concerns that you have heard about, such as the spuds that have discussed last meeting, as well as the spud that you continue today, and you want to be genuine and transparent, then why don't you pass a moratorium on billboards citywide? That would be more defensible, less arbitrary and capricious. And to Councilmember Stone's comment, my client would not bring litigation to oppose that because we want to sit down with you and resolve these problems on a holistic, global perspective and not be targeted by this council. Why are these spuds something of concern? That's a much greater concern than what you just talked about in executive session, a lawsuit that this city has brought against my client and the State Department of Education. Because these spuds could result in this city losing federal highway funds, as well as the State Department of Transportation, losing federal highway funds for spot zoning and zoning purely for the purpose of outdoor advertising, which we know is exactly what these spuds are intended to do. We've already discussed that last time I was up here. And the Federal Highway Administration has made it very clear that spot zoning or zoning specifically for billboards is illegal and can put at risk this city and this state's 10% funding of federal funds. So how will that affect your road projects that are receiving federal funds? That's something that warrants an investigation and may be a moratorium, not targeting my client. It would be arbitrary and capricious to pass this moratorium as proposed that's targeting one specific company that's engaged in this industry. Additionally, it raises serious and grave concerns about potential conflicts that this city is engaging in. When you've engaged an outside counsel, I mean, you've engaged an outside legal counsel, Mr. Box, who's a fine lawyer and a good man, no issues with him, but who represents competitors to my client actively in front of this council, including just a spud that you continue today to allow a billboard sign. So you've hired an outside lawyer who has a direct conflict of interest with my client, has a spud coming before this body that you're going to be considering and voting on for another client of his that's in competition with mine. Now, that's going to be great additional information for me in litigation, showing that this is arbitrary and capricious because you've just limited the area this moratorium's going to apply to where my client is located, not where your outside legal counsel that you have an interest with, obviously, has his interest in the spuds that he's going to be bringing back before you in two weeks. So all the more reason, if you're going to pass this, make it citywide. Let's talk about it, or don't pass it and let the chips fall. I would encourage you also to remember, if you want to be known as a business-friendly community, you need to follow a process and honor your word. Your lawyers, Laura and Amanda, as well as your lobbyists, sat in a room with me and the lobbyist for the state, for the highway, the Outdoor Advertising Association, just a year or two ago regarding the relocation law for the state of Oklahoma, and told us they would not oppose that law. When we agreed to compromise language, that was going to be inserted. And we can ask her if I'm misrepresenting that because I promise you I am not. And on top of that, we were also told by your lawyer, Mr. Brummett, at a temporary restraining order not that long ago, a year ago approximately, and there's been over a dozen relocation permits issued by this city. The city has never opposed a single one of them, except for this one, the Lamar one, the one that you now want to pass a moratorium on, targeting again my client. So if you want to be known as a business-friendly city, we follow a process, and we follow the State Department of Transportation's process to get a relocation permit, and we followed this city of Oklahoma City's process for relocation permits, which up to this point in time, you've never contested, and they've all gone through, and your legal counsel has represented to this court. You guys do not protest them, you do not disagree. Now, your outside lawyer might say that he disagrees with that. My point is that you need to follow your process and stick to your word. And when your lawyers and your lobbyists tell my lobbyist and me that you're not going to fight against a relocation law that the state's put in place, when we've agreed to compromise on that language, we expect the city to honor its word.
All right, thank you, Bill.
We strongly disagree with Mr. Hickman's representations that we weren't going to agree to any kind of preemption on the relocation front for billboards.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, I'm so sorry, but I do agree with Mr. Hickman that there does need to be a discussion about spuds, and that's why this involves more than one company. It involves a lot of companies. And at the suggestion of my lawyer, I'm going to move that, move the ordinance found at 10A B, but I need to make an amendment.
10B, you mean.
Excuse me, 10B, I'm sorry. I need to make an amendment to Section 1, which says there is hereby declared a moratorium on the, I can't read your, the erection of signs or the acceptance of applications. Did I say that correctly, Kenny?
Yes, it's just the words erection of signs you add.
Or the acceptance. Yeah, all right. So right now, the first thing I'd do is move the ordinance with an amendment in Section 1, the amendment I just read.
Yes, you'd have a separate vote on the amendment and then a separate vote on the ordinance, whether the, if the amendment's adopted.
Okay. All right, so you move the amendment.
Yes.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Now, I'd move the amended ordinance.
Okay, now he moves the ordinance is amended. Second, any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Now, I'd move the emergency.
All right, motion in a second for the emergency. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 10C was previously handled at the beginning of the meeting, so we'll go around the horseshoe. Councilman Gray.
Yes, just wanted to thank Councilperson Stone Cypher for joining me on a tour of Ward 2 on Saturday. We met up around 11:00 a.m. at Buttermilk in Paseo, and he joined me, not just for driving around Ward 2, but we came down here and had coffee at Clarity on Main Street because I wanted him to get a sense of how I see Ward 2 connecting to Councilperson Hammond's Ward in downtown. And so we drove around down here. We went into Ward 7 as well, because I wanted him to have a good sense of how I think about that ward as a good neighbor to Ward 2. And it was just, I really appreciate your time. We ended at Frida, which was the first time I'd got to go to that restaurant. It's one of the new restaurants in Ward 2, and that was, I really appreciate your time that day. Related, well, kind of relatedly, we went as far north as from 23rd Street up to 122nd. And the next thing I would want to mention is, on November 16th, the Britton District is going to, which is in Ward 2. It's right there at this intersection, right, where Ward 7 also calls the Britton District home. And then just up the road is where Ward 8 begins. So the Britton District and its revitalization, I think, is key to three different city council wards, and I would say ultimately critical to the entire city. And so on November 16th, they are going to be inviting everyone from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for a family-friendly event. People from Ward 7, Britton District is your home as well, come on in. Ward 2, come on in. Ward 8, there you are, right up the road. Everyone else, come on. Food, music, you name it, they're there to let you know that the Britton District is on its way to its own Renaissance story. That's it. So thanks again for your time.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo on that real quick if I could. Taking a tour, if I would've gone on Ward 2 by myself, it would've been helpful, but this was so meaningful to hear it from James' perspective. And when we got up around Ward 8, we started talking about things that we could work on together in the future. One last, I saw today on the consent docket in Ward 2 and Ward 8, Hefner's going to be resurfaced from Penn to the Hefner Parkway, so that's another project we won't need to work on. But it was quite meaningful, and I am hopeful that I can do that in other councilperson's wards, because it really, I know in the future, when James starts talking about issues, I'll better understand them. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn now, since Councilman Stone Cypher kind of went out of turn there. Just real quickly, on a purely post-personal note, I just wanted to give a shout-out to my wife, Mary Ann. It's our 36th wedding anniversary today, and I always tell everyone that she hit the lottery approximately 36 years ago getting me, but I suspect that the opposite is true. So that's it.
And may I also add, on behalf of the people of Oklahoma City, a belated happy birthday to her from yesterday. Correct. Councilwoman Hammond, Councilwoman Neiss.
Yes, I'd like to say, as we consider visiting other wards, I think it's important for us to do that and take into account this vote that happened earlier, as we're not considering other wards and what that looks like, especially for the communities that are being affected by our votes and for that representative that also represents that particular area or that community that you decide to vote against. So I would like for us to continue to keep that in mind when it comes to us being the councilperson for our wards respectively, to fight for that particular ward and their concerns, and for us to be very considerate of those neighbors. And we have to be good neighbors to our own community as well, and I believe we were not good neighbors to my constituents that live in Classton and Penn on today. I also want to say, with that, attended Women in Aviation and Aerospace Day on this past Friday, and it was electric to see all of the people in the room honoring some wonderful women, the 99s, and also other women that have made an impact in aviation and aerospace. And a lot of us may not know that's a thing, especially how we celebrated in Oklahoma, but there were a lot of women to be celebrated and who have made great strides that came from Oklahoma that have made an impact, not only across this nation, but across this world when it comes to aviation and aerospace. And I believe December 9th is actually the actual celebration day, so I'm sure there will be something that we'll be coming back to on December 9th to talk about that. Went to visit St. Mark Baptist Church on this past Sunday, and they were celebrating their 61st homecoming at the church, so I did want to make mention of that because it's, you know, when you have churches that are celebrating many years of service in any community, or anyone having those types of celebrations for numerous years of celebration, it's to be commemorated, so I wanted to at least make mention of that. And also, we had some young people at FD Moon, their chess team, with the after-school STEAM program that was initiated through the SNI program. We had some young people that participated and played well, and I want to mention them by name. Rodney Parks, Ricky Dooley, and Daytona Dooley. Again, these are some young people that represent FD Moon, and they played on the chess team and represented in a tournament and did very well. And also Derek Hamrick, he was also a volunteer in that effort. So young people are doing some great things in Ward 7, and they are to be commended for their efforts. Tonight, if you had not heard, we are doing a Ward 7 Maps 4 informational town hall. Starts at 6:00 p.m. It's at the Greater Mount Olive Baptist Church located on Northeast 42nd and Kelly. And of the 16 projects, we will mention all projects, but my concern and focus are the projects that are in relation to Ward 7, what that looks like, and we'll hear presentations about those particular projects. And also, we will have representatives to do presentations about those particular projects as well. So I would ask if you all want to be there, please come. And on next Thursday as well, we will have, at this same church location, Oklahoma City Police Department and Neighborhood Alliance, the permitless carry, what you need to know. And I think it's very important for us to understand what our rights are when it comes to us being citizens, because I received two messages yesterday from residents that live within Ward 7, specifically District 97, that there was a gentleman who decided, because the representative of District 97 is who brought this appeal forward to fight this in court, that because it passed, he wanted to go into that community, which is also a part of Ward 7, which is Northeast 23rd Street, and walk around and ask for people to say something. So this is very disturbing, especially what this looks like for our community, when you have communities of color that are being affected by this. And we all, some of us obviously don't know, but let me help you understand, when you have this reflected differently with somebody else carrying an AK or an assault rifle, I don't think you're going to get the same consequences. So let's just, I'll be very frank with that. So that is a grave concern. So again, November 14th is a day for us to remember and come to hear what you need to know. And lastly, I wanted to talk about this, and I know, oh, I got two more things. November 17th, at the National Women in Agriculture Building, they're located 1701 North Martin Luther King, they're having a community plant-based Thanksgiving, and that's from 4:00 to 6:00. And National Women in Ag, they are a national organization, a nonprofit, that is housed in the building that sits on 16th and MLK, which we know as the old YWCA. But the women there offer community gardens, raise beds, and people can access fresh fruits and vegetables for free. And with this, this is a community plant-based Thanksgiving, and this is my first time hearing of something like this happening in our community, and I'm excited about it. So I just wanted to make sure I got that information out, and it's free of charge. So you do have to RSVP, and I'll try to put this on our social media or my, on my personal social media for those who may be watching and want to figure out how they can be a part. Lastly, I talked about the Lions Mansion and the effects of that history. I wanted to make mention about the Care Center and the Brockway Center and what that looks like. I know now the transaction has taken place, but I think it's very important for us to understand the history aspect of the Brockway Center. And the Brockway Center had been in that location since 1968. The business that came and purchased that building didn't arrive until the 90s. But I say that specifically because those women didn't sell that building until 2010. So for anyone to say they did not have a relationship or did not know about the Oklahoma City Federation of Colored Women's Club when they are literally in your backyard, I would have to respectfully disagree. Especially when you look at how the women collected bears and books and donated them every single year to this particular nonprofit and this organization. And also, when you decide to Google a group and you see that there's nothing on them locally, you assume they don't exist. But these women were still doing the work. They continue to raise those, collect bears and books for this organization. So I think it's very detrimental when you have an organization or a nonprofit saying they did not know about a group when in fact they truly did. So that's where my concern is and my discontent when it comes to not acknowledging that you really actually knew who these people were. And again, these women are part of our history. They're the very fabric of what African-American women have contributed to this city, and also what their efforts have contributed to this nation. And especially when it comes to Northeast Oklahoma City and the community that they serve, with scholarships and also teaching etiquette in the era where etiquette was very important. And obviously, that's something that we need to be, bring back to our communities and to our city and to our nation, obviously. So those are things I just wanted to ensure and make sure that I mentioned, that, you know, it's very unfortunate that we had that mention that they did not know about these women when in fact the organization as a whole truly did.
Mayor?
Yes. I forgot to say thank you, and I would be embarrassed till the day I die if I didn't. I want to, Councilperson Neiss reminded me of this. We had a Better Streets Maps 4 meeting in Ward 2, and the goal was, the purpose was to connect the citizens, the residents of Ward 2, to the following city staff. And I just want to thank the following people for being their department's embark, Planning Department, parks, we had our homeless outreach team, we had the Fraternal Order of Police arrived as well, my campaign manager, Aaron Wilder, Neighborhood Alliance, Public Works. And this took place at the Royal Rogers Park. And I want to thank the, my chief of staff, Boyd Fulton. This was really an informational meeting, and it was about letting people know what's happening in Better Streets and the order of those projects. And it was also about letting them know what Maps 4 would do and letting them add their voice to that conversation. I just really want to thank everyone from the city who was able to attend. It was a cold Thursday night when they were there too, so I just thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Item 11, City Manager Report.
Yeah, so we have Mike Carrier's here to make a presentation on the first quarter report for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Just because of the time, we went ahead and bumped the other presentations. The information is in your packets, and we'll decide which ones we bring back. Jeff will probably bring back on the council priority, but we'll decide on the other ones that we'll bring the others back. So, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and say hello to you guys again. It's, you guys and ladies, I should say, using guys as a generic term, but appreciate you all and your support. The first quarter has been a good quarter for us, so a lot of things happening. The first quarter, we exceeded our goal of kind of the benchmark of where we should be. We're at about 31% in definite business that we have booked for this year, for future years, we booked it this year. 128 leads, 252,000 hotel room nights, potential future business that we're working with that extends as far out as 2025. Significant A significant number of those are for the new convention center. Now, we're seeing some great interest in that. Beginning tomorrow at about noon, we will have a dozen national meeting planners in town to do a fam trip here in Oklahoma City, to see the convention center, to see the Omni, to ride the streetcar, to see all of the things that we as a community are doing and have done to make it possible for their associations and activities to be held here in Oklahoma City. And again, those are over a span of now up to 24, 25 calendar years, so looking forward to that. We've attended a number of industry trade shows where, again, the reception for the new convention center has been outstanding. People really like the design. They like what we're doing in terms of a city, and we see a lot of good things as we move forward. This week, I know one of the topics and one of the things we discussed during the run-up to the Maps 4 election is the new arena at the fairgrounds. This week and for the next two weeks is a great opportunity to see why that's so important to us. The American Quarter Horse Association's annual championship show is here for the 44th consecutive year. That show will leave about $38 million in direct spending in Oklahoma City by the time those folks leave. And that will be followed by the National Raining Horse Association's Futurity, which actually starts on Thanksgiving Day. And that will account for another almost $20 million of direct spending by the people who are here from 45 to 48 states and in the Futurities case, from over two dozen foreign countries that will be here for that show. So, great activity for our hotels, for our retailers, a lot of things going on here. Our marketing department, we have just produced the annual visitors guide, a very nice publication that is our primary publication for distribution. We also have a hardbound publication that goes into about half of our hotel rooms around the city. Some hotels will not put them in their rooms because of their brand standards that their parent companies have, like Marriott or Hyatt or something. They have certain things that they will or will not allow to be in their rooms, but anywhere we can put that, we certainly do. Website, obviously, digital and social media continues to grow. Our web traffic is up about 10% over the first quarter with total website visits 490,000 just in the first three months of this fiscal year. So, a lot of people out there looking to see what Oklahoma City is doing, and some 4.7 million impressions on Facebook and other social media channels. So, some really great things going on there. Hotel tax continues to come in strong. We are actually up from last year, at least we were through the first quarter. Haven't seen the October numbers yet, but we continue to show great progress here in Oklahoma City and appreciate your all's help and support with those things that give us so much more to be able to sell. Councilman Stonecypher asked me for some information yesterday. When I moved here 12 and 1/2 years ago, we had a little over 12,000 hotel rooms in Oklahoma City. Today, we have 19,000 inside the city limits. We had five or six hotels in downtown, about 1,500 rooms. We have over 3,300 hotel rooms in downtown right now, and with everything that is under construction and on the way, the things that have been, the franchises that have been purchased, that are under construction or getting ready to start and that we have confidence in, will be up to about 5,000 hotel rooms when they are all completed just in downtown. So, great industry, good dollars coming in, and the more we do here with your all's guidance and help, the easier it is to sell Oklahoma City and to benefit from those tax dollars that keep coming in that allow you all to fund a lot of the things that you have to do to run the city with the sales tax. So, happy to answer any questions, but again, thank you for your help and support.
Your Honor, important point. Mike was kind enough to send me these materials. I gave a talk last night about Maps 4, and I think it was Mayor Norick that told me after he and Jim Scott went in 1992 and met with United, and we were turned down because the executives of United didn't want to live in Oklahoma City. At that time, when we started to embark upon our first maps, there was one hotel in downtown Oklahoma City. It was the Sheraton with 400 rooms. The materials Mike sent me yesterday shows that by the time all the hotels are completed downtown, we will have 35 hotels at 5,352 rooms. So all I got to say is, Maps works.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for all you do.
I just had a question. I was looking at our scope of work and goals when it comes to updating monthly videos, and I see we have 12 that are targeted, and we have three that have been completed. So, I'm just curious to know if some of those areas that are going to be included as far as what to OKC more attractions, events in the Explore Series include Northeast Oklahoma City, because that has been neglected, and that is definitely a destination.
The videos in that series are monthly, or monthly videos that talk about things that are being done or happening in Oklahoma City. And what we do there is to look at different activities that visitors might be interested in. Adventure District certainly is one of the areas that gets covered in that, depending on exactly what's going on up there. But yes, we include things all around the city in that particular series of videos of what's on the calendar this coming month that visitors might want to participate in. But that's the purpose of those videos.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, and as we explore Adventure District, I would like to see us explore with Adventure District more of Northeast Oklahoma City, if that's a way to do that, like restaurants and those types of things that are accessible and in proximity to that area.
It's always a challenge on those videos because the videos are about two minutes long.
Gotcha.
There's a lot of stuff to show.
Yes, sir.
But we also have other videos that, again, are two to three minutes, but they highlight the permanent opportunities in districts all around the city. So, we continue updating those as things are happening. So, we'll be sure that we continue to update things in Ward 7 and as we do, as we try to do with all the other districts around the city.
I appreciate that.
Certainly. Thank you.
I also have a question. So in the discussion about future direct spending and the estimated with the equine events, how do we measure the, like, is there some sort of model that we have that says we expect that we'll generate this much and we can attribute it specifically to this group coming to Oklahoma City, spending 38 or 20 million dollars?
Yeah, the way that we gauge that, several different things. First of all, because everybody that comes to the horse show to participate has to register, we know how many entries there are in the horse show. We know how many horses there are. We know how many riders, exhibitors. Oftentimes, horses will be used in two or three different events. So we look at the number of exhibitors because there may be 700 participants and 900 exhibitors because they're in multiple events. We have also learned over the course of years of doing this that, and this is kind of universally accepted within the equine industry, the average number of people that come with each horse, you've got owners, you've got trainers, you've got stable hands, you've got the riders, you've got, is about three and 1/2 people for each horse that shows up. Then you start adding because you also have what we would call exhibitors, which are vendors that are selling products pertinent to the equine industry. You go to the Quarter Horse Show this week, they have a whole trade show set up in the Bennett Building. You know, it's a Christmas, it's kind of a Christmas party over there where you can buy anything related to horses. Yeah, so we see a lot more folks coming for some of these rather than others. Again, what I said about the Futurity particularly, the number of internationals that come, that's the largest show that we have that has a major international component. Quarter Horse will have about eight or nine foreign countries represented here. But the discipline of reining is the fastest-growing discipline around the world, and so those folks come in here. We can track that, again, because of the registrations that NRHA has. So, we follow it in a variety of different ways. The fairgrounds also, they know how many stalls are used and what those stalls are used for. Some of them are used for things other than for horses. If you're there for like quarters, you're there for two and 1/2 weeks, you take one of those stalls, you turn it into a living room, because you're there from o dark 30 till o dark later 30. So, you know, some modeling like that that we've been able to do over a course of years that has, in Fort Worth, in Denver, in other cities around the country, very similar numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thanks for all you do.
Come to the horse show this week. It's a great way to spend an evening. Bye-bye.
You were saying the rest of your city manager reports, the ones that are online, just go to the
Yes.
Website and check it out
Yes.
Under our council agenda. Okay. Citizens to be Heard, we have three who have signed up to speak, item 12. Ronnie Kirk, followed by Joy Reardon, if Joy can.
My name is Ronnie Kirk, from Ward 7. My address is 2328 North Missouri. Before Governor Merrick Fallon got out of office, she's supposed, the article came up where she was supposed to sign the gun with no background check, was supposed to come in effect that Friday. So I came to city council on that Tuesday, and I explained how a person with no gun training, with no, way of a, excuse me. But she, and I explained the theory of the, when Governor Stitt, I'm so sorry, when Governor Stitt, three months after he got in, he signed this bill to let the gun laws change for people to get guns with no background checks. Also went to Kendra Horns, she's over mental health for the whole state, and I was going to ask the question, what happened to all the kids for their mental health when they have, when they have these trainings for them to duck, hide, and cover? You know, just two days after the gun law was changed, two days after, the young man who went in to Twin Peaks Restaurant with an AK-47, he also went on the northeast part of town where the Black Mars, 200 members in there, one man with an AK-47 standing across the seat saying he has the right to do this. And I don't think y'all know that he also went to Bobo Chicken after the sun went down with red on. And over there, you know, it took a while for us to get out of where we were, red or blue, and we were shooting each other for just having those colors on. But he goes over with an AK-47, went on his back, said he has the right to be there. And also in Denver, they also had a man going to try to blow up the mosque to start a holy war, all this week, all this week. You know, and our police, they're going to have a hard time trying to close Pandora's Box. Everybody got a gun. You know, we, everybody, Oklahoma just won an award for people on drugs, trying to help get them off of drugs. But we also passed this bill where they can have marijuana, and now we want to give them all guns. They already got mental disability. You know, when you're on drugs or anything like that, you be nervous and paranoid, and now everybody in the car almost got a gun. And the police, they, you know, people just been get killed with no clothes on, with a cigarette lighter, with a flashlight in, I mean, a telephone in their pocket.
We're at 3 and 1/2 minutes, if you could
Yes, sir.
Final thought.
Okay. And you know, and I want y'all to work with Kendra Horns, because y'all represent the whole state. She represent everybody also, and y'all try to see how some people that are psychiatrists and stuff, tell y'all what's going to happen to these kids, because I ain't heard nobody say what's going to happen to the kids' minds. And the only, the one man I heard say that was the man from Twin Peaks. He said, "These kids gonna be so nervous." And that was just this weekend.
All right. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you.
Joy Reardon, followed by Michael Washington.
Hello, guys. Joy Reardon, 125 Northwest 9th, Oklahoma City. There was one comment I wanted to comment on earlier that I don't think the developers have taken into consideration where they're wanting to build that building. If it's above the high lines, if, on 13th Street, the high line's on the other side, if you look at OU Medical, what's on 13th and Lincoln? There's three heliports where the medevac's coming. So, if this building's above their flight line, they're going to have to take into consideration the flight line of the medevac. And on the sidewalk stuff, y'all's doing a lot better. I ain't got much complaints, but thank y'all for doing, I know it's an o dot project, but 10th Street, it just needs to be brought down to the corner of 10th and Penn. Y'all may want to check on that. And then on 13th and, or 10th and, Northeast 10th and Lincoln, that corner needs something to be done, because where they put that new sidewalk in to the corner, on the other side, going down the other sidewalk, it's about a two to three inch gap there. Just the other stuff that I've been talking about week after week after week is sidewalks and making sure that the ADA stuff is in compliance. Because right now, I checked my odometer on my chair, which will be, three days, I'll have it for a year. I've got over 1,500 miles on it. So I do check. And from what the Action Center says, I'm one of the highest reporting of incidents around Oklahoma City. So I do watch y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
But yeah, the building, that new building they're wanting to build, that would be something that needs to be considered.
Okay. Michael Washington?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street. Very, very informative gathering today. I'll not speak upon the atrocity reality of a vote that just occurred. So let me instead talk about December 26, Kwanzaa approaching. This is an African-American holiday started by Melana Keringa in 1966 to address the very drastic and abusive reality in which blacks were visited upon here in the Western Hemisphere, what I call America. And it is a time, I believe, that it gives African-American community an opportunity to be abreast of the fact that they have had many great civil rights leaders, great iconic persons, and that we done great things before we got here to the Western Hemisphere of America. As a matter of fact, let it prove be told, we were the first ones to visit Western Hemisphere of America during commerce with the people who were founded, as who were African-Americans. Matter of fact, Indians did not come until maybe 8,000 years ago, unless I'd get that far, but we're not going to talk about that too much lately. But let me say this here. I believe it's important that this horseshoe here start considering I believe it's important that this horseshoe here start considering the fact of maybe possibly having Kwanzaa recognized as a national holiday here in Oklahoma City, as you are recognizing Columbus Day now. Actually, Native Americans Day and no longer reckon Columbus Day, no good guy. I'm not going to say anymore about him. But anyhow, Kwanzaa is a very unique time of the year. It's a seven-day period, begin on December 26 and rolls around to December, excuse me, January 1 of the next year. For seven days, African-Americans are taught to be vibrant about their culture, their history, their language, their God, and their great things and doing things for our community. This would be a great thing if we knew this was like a Christmas or New Year's or Thanksgiving, knowing that that would be a holiday that everybody else has to give recognition to. Just imagine the young people, the young kids who themselves would be able to say, "Hey, this is a moment for me to be proud of. I've got something that I can say that my African roots are being recognized now. Why don't I start doing something better for my community? Why don't I start doing something great to get my kids off of drugs, gangs, and violence and all this and not saying all the sorrys." But I'm just saying, can you imagine those of us that we would affect if we did something like that? Very briefly here and then closer. I think that we need to consider very much, I don't know what steps I'll take to talk to our councilman later on, I think we need to make this one of the most prosperous moments in time in recognizing December 26 as African-American Day, Kwanzaa slash Matanda Ya Kwanzaa, first fruits. Thank y'all very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. That concludes our business today, and we are adjourned.